The broadcast of the regular meeting of the Minneapolis City Council will now begin.
Thank you. I'm Lisa Bender. I'm the president of the Minneapolis City Council, and I'm going to call this regular meeting of the city council for June 12th to order. I'll note this meeting has remote participation by members of the city council and city staff as authorized under Minnesota Statute, Section 13D.021, due to the declared local public health emergency. At this time, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll so we may verify the presence of a quorum.
Councilmember Ellison.
Present.
Councilmember Goodman.
Present.
Councilmember Johnson.
Present.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Present.
Councilmember Gordon.
Here.
Councilmember Conno.
Here.
Councilmember Reich.
Here.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Here.
Councilmember Schrader.
Here.
Councilmember Cunningham. Councilmember Cunningham.
Present.
Vice President Jenkins.
Here.
President Bender.
Here.
There are 12 members present.
Let the record reflect that we have a quorum. Before we begin today, you know, I just want to just note that since George Floyd's killing and all of the other things our community has been through in the weeks that followed, I just want to thank all of my colleagues on the city council for your efforts and all of the support that you've given to our community, which has been in deep pain and, you know, with the coronavirus and its impact on businesses, with Georgia's killing, with the fires that followed. Our council colleagues were literally in the streets, helping support community safety, helping literally pour buckets of water on fires. And I know each of you has been working in your own way to reach out to constituents, to support the community, and really respond to what our community is saying in so many different ways. So I just want to note, as we begin today's meeting, that we're in such an unusual time of multiple layers of crisis and trauma, and we have a long road ahead. But again, just wanted to highlight each of you and your work and leadership and how important it is right now. And my deep thanks to this incredible city council team and the staff who've been also just responding to crisis, to be innovative and to work so hard in a time when our city is facing such budget uncertainties. It just really shows how much our public staff care about this community, how invested they are, and it's really noticed. So I know many of us have talked with staff about all range of things and also just want to thank all of the city staff who have been so responsive and so compassionate and to our community. You know, you've called us, you've emailed, you've been in the streets, each of us participating in our own way with many different perspectives, but all dealing with crisis and trauma. And I think our commitment to you is to continue to listen, to show up in the way that each of us can do best and continue to support our Minneapolis community through this time. So with that, I can pause and see if any other councilmembers want to say anything. I know it's a little unusual, but unusual circumstances as well. Councilmember Ellison.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have a ton to say. I just want to, I just wanted to say that I think the murder of George Floyd really hit, obviously, the entire world in a way that we couldn't have expected. I had an opportunity to go to DC yesterday to testify before Congress. And what people want to know is, you know, what happened in Minneapolis and what is Minneapolis doing? And I think that it's, I think it's really a signal of just how much this moment has really hit people, that folks in Congress want to know what you all are, they're asking me what you all are thinking, what my colleagues are thinking, and what we're going to do and how we're going to move forward next. I just, I just want to, in this moment, express deep condolences for not only the family of George Floyd, but you know, we've had a number of people who have been killed by our police department. That means that we have a number of families who are still in our community, who are, you know, they're experiencing this trauma all over again. And so I want to express my condolences to them and just say that I'm going to do everything in my power to sort of meet my obligation as a council member to keep people safe. And so I just thank all my colleagues for having been in conversation, for having, with, 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 off with each other and for paying close attention to your constituents. I think it would have been really easy for a lot of us to crawl under a rock. It's been really stressful between the unrest and coronavirus, but I didn't see that from any of my colleagues. Everybody stepped up to address their constituents. I mean, I really admire and respect that. So that's all.
Thank you. Anything else before we proceed to our procedural votes? I don't see any. Thank you, Councilor Ellison, for those words. So the agenda for today's meeting is before us. We do have a few amendments. First, we have a resolution brought by myself, Council Vice President Jenkins, and councilmembers Fletcher, Cunningham, Conno, and Palmasano. And this is a resolution expressing the intent of the city council to create a new model for cultivating safety in our community and directing staff on several next steps. This resolution would be added under the Order of New Businesses Item Number Three. Second, we have a resolution offered by Councilmember Palmasano that terminates the state of local emergency called by the mayor on May 28th and extended by the council on May 30th pursuant to Resolution Number 2020R150. To clarify for my colleagues, this is a procedural resolution that confirms the prior action we took to end that emergency on this date. And this resolution, which was requested by the clerk, provides an affirmative end to that declared state of emergency. So that would be under Item Number Four under New Business. And finally, we have notice from councilmembers Ellison, Conno, Gordon, Fletcher, and myself of intent to bring forward the subject matter of an ordinance to create a new charter department to provide for community safety. And that would be a question submitted to voters in the November general election. That would be added as Item Number Three under the Notice of Ordinance Introductions. Are there any other amendments to the agenda from councilmembers? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Then the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Conno.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries in the agenda is adopted as amended. Next, we have acceptance of the minutes from our regular meeting on May 22nd, as well as the minutes from the emergency meeting on May 30th and June 5th. May I have a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Conno.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries and those minutes are accepted. Next, we have the referral petitions, communications, and reports to the proper committees. May I have that motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Conno.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries and those items are referred. With that, we'll proceed to our Order of New Business, beginning with the mayor's regular report on the state of our local public health emergency. Welcome, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, members of the city council, for all of your work and partnership. As has already been stated, this week marked George Floyd's funeral in Houston, where his family sounded a note of hopefulness and noted accurately that George is going to change the world and that change must and will start right here in Minneapolis. You saw Chief Arredondo make a motion for to be one of the first major city department in the country to pursue an early intervention system with real-time data for supervisors. And as we know, people build culture, and I truly believe it is time to free him to begin remaking this department in his image. In other words, empower him to discipline and terminate problematic officers and make sure that it ultimately sticks. And I've said this before, that George Floyd's murder needs to give way to a reckoning between our words and promises of the past and actions in the present and in the future. And Minneapolis can and should be ground zero for addressing head-on this institutional racism that has created such deep inequities in our city, in our state, and in our nation. And I also, as has been met noted, I want to give just a huge thank you to all of our city staff. I know they are bearing so much. I know they are tired. I know that every day at times seems like it is more difficult, but they are working around the clock and they're doing their absolute best to balance these competing needs that are being thrown at them minute by minute. And I just wanted to say a heartfelt thank you to all of them, departmental staff, mayor's staff, council staff, staff throughout our entire enterprise. We deeply appreciate you. And through all of this, of course, we're still in the middle of a global health pandemic. The governor's peacetime emergency remains intact, signaling to all of us that it's still important for Minneapolis to be on alert. And the emergency declaration with respect to the unrest, as was noted, expires today. And I've been working with Councilmember Palmasano's office to bring forward just a formal recognition that in fact the expiration takes place. And I appreciate the work. There have been 14 emergency regulations to date. I won't get into any of them, but I'm happy to answer any question. And there are two new emergency regulations since last we met on May 22nd. The temporary expansion of premises, which is the emergency regulation number 2020-13. So June 1st marked the first wave of retail and restaurants' ability to reopen at a reduced level, and we are starting to see that right now. This includes several measures to help businesses take advantage of outdoor space with more commercial activity and have these expansions of premises. All fees associated with applications for temporary expansions are waived. And we're trying to expedite this process as much as possible, noting that many of these businesses do not have the financial ability without expansion of premises to continue to operate. Next is paid leave amendment. This is emergency regulation number 2020-14. And this amendment just clarifies the scope and operation of the Paid Sick Leave Act and the Emergency Family and Medical Leave Expansion Act for emergency responders. Next is the Health Report by the Numbers. Total approximate number of completed tests is 381,841, which is more than double from the last time we met. And so we are seeing a substantial uptick right now. As far as Minnesota case information, the total positives is 29,316. 24,000 of those patients no longer need to be isolated. There have been 1,249 deaths, and 994 of those have taken place in long-term assisted living care facilities. In Hennepin County, there are 9,815 positive cases. There have been 700 deaths in Hennepin County. And the number of healthcare workers that have been impacted is 3,061. The total cases requiring hospitalization are 3,522. 411 are hospitalized as of today with 196 in an ICU. The total positive cases, this is for Minneapolis, is 3,884. 13% of the state's cases, that's slightly, a slightly higher rate than our population, and we're about 40% of the county's cases. The total hospitalized is 617, with 177 needing ICU care. 3,290 of them have recovered, 159 deceased. Next is for the congregate care facilities, which we know has been a real hotbed for both spread and contraction. The congregate living facilities in Minneapolis really continue to see the new cases, most of the new cases among residents, while accounting for about 12% of confirmed cases, they account for 79% of COVID-19 deaths. So again, 12% of the cases, about 80% of the deaths. Majority of white cases, 55% or 45 and older, cases among blacks, Asians, and Hispanics are under 45 years of age, over 60% for all. The next is testing. The Minnesota Department of Health is recommending expanding COVID-19 testing due to recent mass events that were spurred by the murder of George Floyd. Thousands of people may have been exposed to COVID-19 due to the large concentrations of people in the area. And even with masks, we know that practicing safe physical distancing was largely impossible. Identifying and testing individuals who may have participated in large public events will improve the ability to identify cases and institute appropriate isolation and quarantine measures from there. Free testing is being offered this month in Minneapolis and in St. Paul. And the Minneapolis Health Department is focused on supporting Community University Healthcare Center's testing event, which is at the Cedars in partnership with the MPA. And we're pleased to see this partnership moving forward because we know that some of these larger complexes are particularly higher risk due to both presence of seniors as well as density and concentration of people. They are also conducting COVID-19 testing for Riverside Plaza residents in partnership with Hennepin Health. And testing criteria for all sites include people who have participated in any large gatherings, included but not limited to protests, community cleanup and recovery efforts, vigils, neighborhood meetings, et cetera. This also includes first responders and those who responded to the events. Quite a bit of work is happening in the area of contact tracing, and the Health Department continues to conduct over 30 case investigations and contact follow-up. Currently, the Health Department has about 23 investigators and is onboarding 15 more. For the Office of Emergency Management, Council President, I see Council Vice President Jenkins has a question. I'm happy to just keep going or stop.
Yeah, Council Vice President Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam President and Mayor Fry. I wanted to just highlight Horn Towers as a site that really needs testing. I have expressed these concerns to the commissioner, musicant, but I want to encourage you, mayor, to help with that as well. I spoke with the director of MPA and former city council member Worsami, and he's deeply concerned about that facility.
Madam President, Council Vice President, I agree and hear you entirely and have had similar conversations with, whatever his new title, Councilmember Worsami's new title is, Director Worsami.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Office of Emergency Management and workforce. The city's workforce continues to maintain normal workforce strength and essential functions of government. The daily rate of workers on duty is still and continues to be between 89 and 91% of the total workforce, with approximately 79% of workers on duty are working remotely. That excludes, of course, police and fire. OEM's efforts remain focused on the awareness of trends, impacts, and the health of our residents. Moving on to HR. To date, 94 staff have been reassigned to focus on critical needs of the city, including 311 staffing, Minneapolis Gap funds for housing implementation with both CPED and Minneapolis Public Housing. There have been contact tracing work with our Health Department and our Finance and Property Services have been helping with the new building policy manual to help clean and sanitize the city's facilities and with the city clerk's office also to help with virtual team meetings. And so I really do appreciate everybody's willingness to rally around a shift that they didn't necessarily sign up for and really thank them for their flexibility in doing so. On procurement, as of June 10th, 2020, there's been 4,973,960 spent in procurement. And again, I will note that this is not our total costs incurred. Our expenses are in the tens of millions and probably upwards of around 65 to 68. The total increased roughly 50,000 since the last update on May 22nd, and those expenditures can be mainly attributed to cloth masks and programmatic support for those impacted by COVID-19. Next is for the budget. We've, as you know, broken this into two phases of work. Phase one, and this is the more urgent and administrative items that will come through POGO on June 18th. These include hiring freeze, wage freeze, discretionary spend freeze, large purchase freeze, and contractual service cuts. Phase two, which of the budget items are more policy-based than administrative and include programmatic and operational cuts, furloughs, and of course, as a last resort, layoffs. On Thursday, July 9th, I'll provide a 2020 revised budget briefing before the regular POGO committee meeting. Then on Friday, July 10th, budget staff will present the details of my proposed 2020 revised budget and also offer a question and answer period for council members. In the evening on Tuesday, July 14th, the first public hearing on the proposed 2020 budget amendment will be held. The following Friday, July 17th, we'll have budget markup. And then in the morning of Wednesday, July 22nd, there will be a second public hearing on the proposed 2020 revised budget. I know there's a lot of dates there, and you know, we are working through first the administrative budget, followed by more deep and operational-related cuts, followed by the actual 2021 budget as is normally scheduled. And so I know this is a lot to keep track of. We will do everything possible to keep council members as informed as possible. And then finally, on July 24th, I mentioned, will be the markup and adoption of the 2020 revised.
Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, mayor. I just want to continue to raise the same concern raised before. When the older process, we were told, you know, we had to act quickly, that we're losing money every, every day. I just, in phase one, and as we go through this, I just want to stress that we're making the cuts that we need to make. You know, if we really are, and which we are, 165 million plus in the hole, we need to make those cuts as soon as possible. And again, I'll renew my request that when folks are emailing you all, I'm not asking for more information. I'm not asking for more detailed information. I'm just asking for the same information. All people, all the directors would have to do is copy council members when they're emailing you. I think that would expedite this process, especially now that it's going to be even one month later than the original process.
Madam President, Councilmember Schrader, thank you. Next, the item is public safety, MPD trends. Violent crime is up right now, 9.6% year-to-date. And property crimes are up about 10.3% year-to-date. The past two weeks, there has been an increase in spot shooter activations. And during the week of May 25th, there were 1,300 shot-spotter activations, which is high. During the week of June 4th, there were just over 600 shot-spotter activations. Year-to-date, 2020 has the, a higher shooting victim total than we've seen in recent years. There were a total of 37 gunshot wound victims from the past two weeks. Public safety reform, as part of the temporary restraining order, we will be submitting state law changes necessary for us to make the substantial reforms we all want on or before July 30th. Additionally, we are working on an abbreviated version of that list to push at the state level during the special session. We've seen a package of reforms from the People of Color and Indigenous Caucus, Minneapolis delegation members, and the House Public Safety Chair. The House's first public safety committee hearing is tentatively scheduled for this Saturday at noon, where reform proposals will be discussed. As for fire, the Minneapolis Fire Department has transitioned back into a normal operations mode. The run volume has remained consistent with a slight downturn compared to the same time period in 2019. MFD continues to assist the ATF with their investigations into determining who may have intentionally set fires during the recent period of unrest. And the department is refocusing personnel on the COVID-19 precautionary measures put into place prior to the unrest.
Council Vice President Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam President. Mayor Fry, I am wondering, you know, MPD trends and statistics, do we know who and where these 37 gunshot victims are? Like ethnicities, communities where these shootings are taking place?
Madam President, Council Vice President, yes, we do know that it is, at this point, I believe, disclosed on the publicly available database. I'm not sure if they're representative from our police department or our chief is on right now. Perhaps they can provide more detail about location as well as status of victims and others.
Is there anyone?
Council Vice President appears that the chief is not on right now, but we can, we can get you that information, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, there have been a lot of lawsuits coming in, as I know you know, around police behavior after George Floyd was killed. Is there a plan to ask for an independent investigation of what happened?
There are many lawsuits, as you mentioned. There are lawsuits from both individuals as well as entities, including the ACLU. And that one, I believe, was with regard to journalists. Yes, there will be an investigation. I, as to the nature of independent versus non, I think it would largely depend on the specific incident that they're talking about. As you know, there were many, there have been many lawsuits that have been filed. I don't know if the city attorney can comment further at this point?
Hi. Hello, Eric Nelson, City Attorney's Office, Council President. Yes, we are, you know, we're, we're in discussion and looking at all of our options. As you know, we are also immediately at work on the further work in the Department of Human Rights investigation and exploring our options with legal assistance in that realm in particular. And so, so yes, I mean, the discussions are still preliminary at this point, so I, I'm reticent about saying more at this point, but, but I think it's safe to say that outside legal consultation in a variety of areas will be necessary.
Thank you. I think it will be important to share as much as we can about that in the public. I know in the past, the Department of Justice has, has been involved, and that's maybe not as relevant an option right now in this administration. So just looking at the options for that kind of bigger scale review may rest with the state, but I know that, you know, I know that there were also state law enforcement out there as well. So I'll, I'll look forward to following up. Thank you both.
Thank you. Thank you. And yes, we have at least two of the independent investigations happening right now. As you mentioned, Council President, through both the DOJ as well as the state. But you're correct, it's not fully independent if the state was involved too. 911, our 911 employees continue to perform at a high level as they have. 911, our 911 employees continue to perform at a high level as they have for the last several weeks. Residents and businesses should continue to call 911 for medical emergencies, fires, and immediate public safety threats. Next for state and federal activity, and I'll try to get through this as quickly as possible. The governor has called a special session, which convenes today, Friday, June 12. The length of that special session, as well as agreements, are not yet fully known. IGR has been working with legislators, department staff, council members, and others on gathering information for economic assistance for impacted businesses and communities, and, you know, we're going to need it. As I mentioned, it's somewhere in the range of $65 million in costs, in addition to the $165 to $200 million in deficits that we're seeing right now. And so we've really got to continue to push support for our residents, for our city's small businesses, to ensure that they are being incorporated into these proposals. And we also know that Minneapolis, as a city, has been disproportionately impacted by That's in addition to the damages that we've seen due to the unrest.
Councilmember Fletcher has a question or comment.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Mayor. Going back to the last slide, I just wanted to ask a follow-up question about 911 response, because I've gotten a lot of questions about this. Can you just tell us what the current status of 911 response is? I know that Priority One calls are being answered. We had received a communication sort of earlier in the process when there was more going on that some Priority Two and Three calls were not. So I guess I'm just curious about the current status of our sort of current capacity and your current assessment of what 911 responses are reliably happening right now.
Madam President, Councilmember Fletcher, you are correct in that for a period of at least days, the ability to respond to the 911, even Priority One calls that we were getting, was somewhat limited. The figure that I recall getting from the Chief is that at any one time, there were somewhere in the range of 65 911 calls, Priority Ones, that we weren't able to answer during that at least initial phase. Now, as the unrest due to the murder of George Floyd has somewhat subsided, we are back on more of a normal track. I don't know if Director Hughes is on the phone to provide specific data on 911 response time, but if not, Councilmember, we can certainly get that to you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is Mark Ruff. Director Hughes from our Emergency Communications is not on the call this morning, but I have been in regular contact with her, and I think the mayor's summary of being back to normal operations is accurate. If there is specific data that you are looking for, Councilmember Fletcher, please let us know, and we will be immediately responsive to that.
I'll move to the federal update right now. City staff had an initial meeting with staff from Senators Klobuchar and Smith and Representative McCollum's and Omar's offices on Tuesday this week, and they were briefed on potential federal aid and community investment needs. The path to aid at the federal level, to be frank, is steep, but the commitment from our federal delegation is very strong, and they remain very committed. Homelessness response. For the safety of the residents staying in several large encampments near areas of unrest in South Minneapolis over the weekend of May 29, Hennepin County and the City of Minneapolis participated in an evacuation process led by the Met Council and the Minnesota Interagency Council on Homelessness, and around 130 people experiencing unsheltered homelessness in the encampments were moved to alternate living arrangements at two area hotels being leased and managed by Avivo and Start Today Hennepin, who are working to place these residents in permanent housing. These services are being funded through amended housing support agreements with Hennepin County as well as the Regional Metro Committee. Next is the GAAP funding package. The initial group of 1,500 applicants have all been assigned to Community Prevention Partners, NPHA, or city or county staff to complete the full verification and approval process. And as of Wednesday, June 10, 178 applicants have been approved with assistance payments or are in progress presently. I'll note that this obviously does not tackle the whole entire need, but we are doing everything we can to both work diligently as well as get the best leverage for each one of our dollars. Additional city and county staff have been assigned to assist in the approval process as well, in an effort to expedite the timelines. Approvals are expected to increase dramatically in the next few weeks as applicants and property owners submit the necessary information to complete the verification process. And then finally, the forgivable loan program. 14% of small business loan applicants were awarded loans, 168 of 1,190 applicants, 87% of those went to businesses in awards four, five, six, eight, and nine. 80% went to VIPAC-owned businesses. The majority of the funds were used for utilities, commercial, and supplier payments. We'll end there, as I know you have a lot of work on your plate. Thank you all for your time and your partnership, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll note for the public that the amended agenda items, including the extension of the local public health emergency item, are all on the posted agenda on the city's website. And so I'll see if there are any questions or comments from council members from the mayor. Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for this update. I just wanted to see if, perhaps I'm missing the information, so please forgive me if I am. Is it possible for us to get a list of the businesses that were awarded the forgivable
Madam President, Councilmember Cunningham, I'm sure the answer is yes. I do not have that list before me right now. I don't foresee there being any privacy issues, so I don't want to commit 100%, but I believe the answer is yes, and we can work with David Frank, Eric Hansen, and Sean Pierce to get that information to you if you're interested.
Great, I would really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Vice President Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam President and Mr. Mayor. And just to extend Councilmember Cunningham's request, I would like to have a little more content. You know, I mean, your report is great, it's really fast. If we could have a written document that can help us be able to communicate with our constituents much better.
Thank you, Madam President, Council Vice President. I believe that a report of my remarks, but in more extended fashion, has been sent over. If it has not yet this morning, it usually is, and so we'll make sure to get that to you as soon as possible.
Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mayor.
I just wanted to note that we do have receipt of those this morning. They're added to the agenda. I will send a link to all council members.
Thank you, Mr. Clark and Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Councilmember Gordon.
I would just note that it would be my assumption, and I think our best practice is, so the forgivable loan program, for example, we should get a full reporter at the committee level from our city staff on that soon. I really appreciate people bringing up wanting more details, and I just wanted to go on the record expressing that that would be great, and let's make sure those details are in public through our committee process so that everybody can have access and see and help us analyze that information.
Madam President, Councilmember Gordon, I agree. Let's make that happen.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Schrader.
Hi, just, thank you, Mayor. Wanted to follow up on Councilmember Gordon's request that these go through committee or just at least get an update. I think some of the things that we're hearing from the Chief of what things that he's looking at doing, it'd be very helpful to have a larger report to get a little more details about this early warning system, cost, what we, kind of the outcomes we'd expect to see. Thank you.
Madam President, Councilmember Schrader, I agree on that too. As of right now, there is no cost, at least to the city, as it's being funded externally, but that's, you're absolutely right. Let's get that on the docket as well.
Thank you, and I'll follow up on that too as well with the clerk on any procedural things that would need to go through council. Any further questions? I don't see any. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Right, so that completes the mayor's reports. If there's no objection, I'll direct the clerk to file that report. The next item is the council's resolution ratifying the existing local public health emergency with an updated draft that includes the amendment, which has been posted online. So I'll ask the clerk to speak to this item.
Thank you, Madam President. As the mayor indicated, what this resolution does, as you know, is to add in and therefore ratify and extend the coverage of the emergency regulations that have been issued by the mayor. The mayor indicated that emergency regulation numbers 13 and 14 were added since the last action by council. As he also indicated, Regulation Number 13 has to do with easing zoning and licensing regulations specific to restaurants and bars in the city of Minneapolis, and Regulation Number 14 amends certain definitions related to the assignment of emergency responder status to comply with federal laws related to emergency paid sick leaves that are available to city workers. So the resolution before you incorporates those emergency regulations that have been issued since your last action on this resolution, and incorporates those as part of that council action going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Carl. Is there any comment or question on this item from council members? Councilmember Gordon.
This is more of a general comment. I think it's been very challenging working under the state of emergency conditions. I think when it was originally set, we were thinking the timeline might follow the state's state of emergency. I think we might all benefit from figuring out how we can get back to more of a regular pace, where the, in a regular, normal flow. I think we now, as a council, are meeting often enough and frequently enough to respond to these kinds of things, and if we need emergency regulations and ordinances, we can put them in place. I'm not proposing any amendment to the resolution right now to end it early, but I did want to at least let you all know that I'm interested in us making the plan for how we can get out of this state of emergency, and I would love us to think about the benefits of staying in it as opposed to the, you know, the risks or the hardships imposed by staying in it and come up with some kind of a plan for ending it and getting back to operating procedures that we're more familiar with and that we know better. I know that this is what allows us to meet virtually, so that's a big question, but, and I don't want to analyze and talk about them all now, but at least I wanted, you know, to share my desires with you, since we're all here and we don't get to get together very often, and share those things, and thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. As someone who started out as not very high-tech, I have finally, like the enterprise, learned to adjust to this virtual meeting, and my concern about this conversation has to do with the inability to meet virtually. I feel I'm happy for my colleagues who feel like they can go out and resume their normal lives, but my mom has COPD. I haven't been able to see her in 10 weeks, and she's afraid to see me because she's afraid that I'll go out, and I'm worried about a second phase of the virus that will put us back at home more permanently. So I would ask us to give real thought to how we, as well as our employees, feel about having to come into the office in large numbers to facilitate these meetings, and how we would take social distancing, mask wearing, and all of the other precautions extremely seriously, because I think if we go back, it will make our colleagues in the enterprise feel like they need to go back, and I do think that there is a concern within the enterprise that the whole world is moving too quickly as the cases begin to rise. So I would just ask us to take a public health approach to thinking about what ending the emergency means, because as leaders within the city, we've made it acceptable for our teams to work remotely, and they're doing so pretty successfully. And so I think we have to be very careful. And to be fair, this was not at all meant to criticize Councilmember Gordon, but to just raise the topic that if I can adjust to the technology thing, and it took me a long time to, we should be weighing public health with the emergency, and I would just ask that leadership take that very seriously, not just for us, but for all of the employees that would have to come back to facilitate the end of these electronic meetings. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anything further on this resolution? Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Thank you. So that's a motion to ratify the existing local public health emergency. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Conno.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and that resolution is adopted. Next, we have the resolution that was added to our agenda this morning, and this is a resolution expressing the policy intent of this body to work to create a new model of cultivating safety in our city. This resolution is authored together with myself, Council Vice President Jenkins, and councilmembers Fletcher, Cunningham, Conno, and Palmasano. It is now up on the city's website in the LIMs system under our posted agenda. It is quite lengthy. If any council member wanted to read it, I would welcome that. I will just describe it briefly before opening it up to any questions or comments or others who may want to describe it as well.
Council President, would you like the staff to display that copy of the resolution?
Yes, please, Mr. Clerk.
We'll do that.
Thank you. So this resolution before us is declaring the intent to create a transformative new model for cultivating safety in our city. It describes the history of police violence and use of excessive force and the impacts that that has had in our community. It talks about the financial liability we've experienced as a city related to those use of force incidents in the past. It talks about the institutions in our city that have recently ended their contracts or relationships with the police department. And, Mr. Clerk, I think we're getting the correct information to display, including the University of Minnesota, the Park Board, and School Board, and others. It talks about systems change that has been adopted in the past, highlighting the work of our police chief, Medario Aradondo, and leading that work and the importance of his leadership. It talks about our investments in community-based safety, our 911 work groups work, along with council members, to look at ways to shift response to community needs from the department into other, more appropriate responses. It talks about how much of our budget is currently allocated to the police department, which is $193 million, representing over 36% of the city's general fund, which is more than twice as much as the combined budgets for workforce development, building affordable housing, homeownership support, small business support, environmental sustainability, race equity, arts and culture, and violence prevention, family and early childhood support, youth development, senior services, lead poisoning prevention, infectious disease prevention, and protection of civil rights, all combined. It talks about the murder of George Floyd, the impact on our city, and particularly Black people and people of color in Minneapolis. It talks about others who have died from police violence, and the protests and uprisings we have seen, not just here in Minneapolis, but across the United States and across the world, reacting to the killing of George Floyd. So I might invite one of my colleagues to read the resolved clauses of the resolution. So I've described some of the background that we included in the whereas clauses, but if anyone would like to read the resolved clauses that talk through the next steps, I'll invite anyone to volunteer for that. I'll invite anyone to volunteer for that. Council vice president Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam President. I had to find my glasses in order to be able to assist in this. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Minneapolis that the city council will commence a year-long process of community engagement, research, and structural change to create a transformative new model for cultivating safety in our city. Be it further resolved that the city council will engage with every willing community member in Minneapolis, centering the voices of Black people, American Indian people, people of color, immigrants, victims of harm, and other stakeholders who have been historically marginalized or underserved by our present system. The screen just changed on me, and I can't control it. Be it further resolved that this process will center the role of healing and reconciliation. The process will require healers, elders, youth, artists, and organizers to lead deep community engagement on race and public safety. We will work with local and national leaders on transformative justice in partnerships informed by the needs of every block in our city. I'm not sure who's controlling this. It's really difficult to read it in this, in this manner. Be it further resolved that the decades of police reform efforts have not created equitable public safety in our community, and our efforts to achieve transformative public safety will not be deterred by the inertia of existing institutions, contracts, and legislation. Be it further resolved that these efforts heed the words of Angela Davis. In a racist society, it is not enough to be non-racist. We must be anti-racist. Be it further resolved that the transformation under consideration has a citywide impact and will be conducted by the city council in a spirit of collaboration and transparency with all constructive stakeholder contributors, including the mayor's office, the police chief, Hennepin County, and the Minnesota Department of Human Rights. Be it further resolved that the city council hereby creates a future of community safety work group to include a staff from the Office of Violence Prevention, the Department of Civil Rights, the City Coordinator's Office, in coordination with the 911 Working Group, the Division of Race and Equity, Neighborhood and Community Relations, and other relevant departments, and directs the work group to do the following. One, report back to the city council by July 24, 2020 with a set of preliminary recommendations for engaging with specific cultural stakeholder groups, the community at large, and relevant experts that can partner with the city to help Minneapolis transition to a transformative model for cultivating community safety, including budget and resource needs estimated, estimates for the process. And two, with regular reports to the city council, develop and present strategies for building this new model for cultivating community safety, building on and acknowledging the work of the Police Conduct Oversight Commission, the Office of Violence Prevention, the Audit Committee, the 911 Working Group, and community-based organizations, including, but not limited to, A, immediate policy changes, investments, and partnerships that center public health approach to community safety and support alternatives to policing; B, research and engagement to inform the potential creation of a new city department of community safety with a holistic approach to community safety, including a review and analysis of relevant existing models and programs and practices that could be applied in Minneapolis; C, recommendations that advance the work of 911, of the 911 Working Group, and other strategies for transitioning the work of the Minneapolis Police Department to alternative, more appropriate responses to community requests for help, identifying resources needed to perform this work in city departments, other agencies, and/or community partners, while the work of creating a new public system, public safety system, is in progress; and D, recommendations for additional community safety strategies that build upon the existing work across our city enterprise that approaches public safety through a public health lens. And I believe that is the conclusion of the therefore section of this resolution.
Thank you, Madam President. I do have a number of councilmembers in queue to speak. I'm sure the vice president will also want any comments. Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, I would thank all the authors for working on this resolution, and I'd like to add my name to that, if the clerk would mind, would mind doing that. I think one of the things I want to say about this and why I'm really, why I appreciate this approach, I don't, I don't talk about this a lot, but my, my history of working in Illinois with a very large, very diverse coalition to abolish the death penalty, I think this approach mimics that a little bit more, which I like to see. With that diverse, all those stakeholders that had a very, like differed on views a lot, we didn't always have a set outcome we were going for or what we wanted to look like, but folks kept along, they had faith, they had an open mind, because they trusted that their voice was going to get heard. So what I like about this process is just our commitment to all the people we represent, that people's voices will be heard, that there will be time to really look at things to process. And so for that, I just kind of really appreciate all the work that's been done on this. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you to my colleagues who have worked on this alongside me. I'm grateful to be able to be an author on this. A lot of time and energy went into this. What makes me so excited about this particular resolution is because it names reality and it names what we're going to be doing in order to address the injustices that we experience as a part of our current reality. This is a very actionable item. I know that sometimes these sort of process things around creating work groups may not feel tangible, but this is the city enterprise beginning to coalesce around this intention that the city council, that many of us have spoken to wanting to see. And so I'm grateful for everyone who has, who has put the time and energy in. I look forward to collaborating with city, with my city council colleagues, as well as city staff. One of the things that I think is most important that is named in this is the community engagement that's ahead of us. We cannot proceed with any new system of cultivating public safety without them being co-designed with communities. And those in centering Black and Brown communities who are disproportionately impacted not only by police violence, but community violence as well, is really how we are going to just significantly change systems and the outcomes that we see in our city. I am very excited about the systems change work. I'm glad that we are making concrete, actionable steps towards doing this work and that we are centering first and foremost, community engagement in the process. I think that that is so powerful. What we know is that historically and even presently, government typically works top-down. And government working top-down has resulted in the outcomes that we see today. What we have here is an opportunity to truly model, not only here in Minneapolis, but for the rest of the country, what does it look like for us to build from the grassroots up, from community up? How do we follow the lead of our constituents and the residents of this city in order to be able to have the best outcomes? Communities who are impacted by the issues that we experience at the community level, those are the folks who have the best answers. They are the ones who have the solutions. So by creating a formal framework and structure for us to actually begin the process of having that input in the ultimate outcomes, I think is really powerful. And I'm excited to be able to be a part of this work in creating these new systems and ensuring that every single resident in our city is safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kano.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm just trying to make sure that I'm logged in properly. I just wanted to say thank you so much to all of the councilmembers who worked on this. I know that since the event at Powderhorn Park with hundreds of community members, many of us have poured days and nights into what this future, what these future steps are going to look like. I'll say that I think it was really important for the city council to take action on these items today, primarily and foremost because of the thousands and, the thousands of voices, actually, not just in Minneapolis, but across the country, who have presented as community engagement to us, saying, we want you to change these systems. And so many of us were able to stand together to say that we acknowledge that the current system is not reformable, that we would like to end the current policing system as we know it, and that we would like to create a completely new transformative model of public safety that centers a lot of things, healing, restorative justice, relationships, the respect and dignity that so many of our community members want and deserve. And so I feel like today's action is really warranted by, again, the thousands and thousands of people who took to the streets and who came to Minneapolis to the corner of 38th Street and Chicago Avenue to support Mr. George Floyd's family and the many families who have suffered these tragic losses over decades and decades of police reform initiatives that have not yielded the result that we want and the result that we have all committed to, to have as part of our racial equity work. So I'm really thankful, and I have a lot of gratitude to share with all of my colleagues today for their leadership, to stand together and do this today. We know that right now, the nation is watching us and that our city feels divided and broken, and that it's really important for all of us to rise to the occasion, to be clear about the moral moment that we have here before us, to lead with our hearts and allow our brains to follow, and to really commit to this year-long process of community engagement, which I will say is not going to be only the responsibility of the city, but it is going to be a moment for all of our community groups to also step up and work together with us and with each other, the works grouping, the groups working with one another, primarily because I believe that this process will require validation. It's going to require deep validation from all the different sectors of our community to ensure that when we're done with this process, we are one whole, united community. And that, I believe that that goal can only be reached when every single group and our local jurisdictions work together to help us achieve that. So I want to say that I am sharing that responsibility and inviting others to take heed of that vision that we've all put together, because it's not just on the shoulders of the city of Minneapolis and our city staff to help deliver that process and that outcome. This is truly a moment of decentralizing those decisions. It is a moment where our society is being reorganized and restructured in very deep ways. And I think it will require all of the different community-based groups and organizations who are interested in this topic to collaborate radically, to show up for one another in mutual aid ways like we've never done before, to center healing and to, to help our city move forward. It is really upon all of our shoulders to deliver this process. And so I'm here for that. I'm pouring myself into this work like I've never done before, and I invite many of our community leaders and our community groups to also step into this space with that intention. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam President. I just, I just have a few remarks. You know, American democracy is a, is an idea. It's an experiment. And I think each generation has an opportunity to leave its mark. The winds of change have brought us to this moment. Coronavirus has highlighted and revealed the structural racism that causes Black and Brown folks to be twice as likely to contract and die from COVID-19 than white Americans. The Minnesota Department of Human Rights has filed a claim of discrimination against our Minneapolis Police Department. University of Minnesota ended its contract with MPD, as did the Walker Arts Center, the Minneapolis Institute of Arts, and so many other entities. And, and I do want to really ask those institutions to examine their own institutionalized racism within those institutions as well. Nobody is exempt from this. People have marched all over the world, all over the city of Minneapolis, and what they're saying to us is they want change. Not fix it, not reform, but change. So we must take these voices seriously. We need to incorporate with all of the deep work that has been done by groups like Reclaim the Block, the Citizens United for Police Brutality, the Black Visions Collective, but not only those groups, we need to hear from the entirety of our community. Centering Black voices, and that can't just be lip service. We must take into account what Black community members are telling us. And it has to be authentic. It has to be coordinated. It can't be top-down, as, as has already been alluded to and, and very well stated. And, and so I'm committed to doing this work. I know for a fact that the mayor's office has been deeply engaged in, in trying to create a community engagement process. a community engagement process. We don't have to follow that model, but we need to all be working together. There are no expendable people. We need the mayor, we need the police chief, we need all the voices that I mentioned before. We need each and every one of you to be committed to this process, as well as myself and every resident of this, of this city. And so I'm, I am, I'm looking forward to the work ahead. And it's going to be some difficult days. And hopefully, we will get to a new reality of public safety in our community, that everyone in our community can feel safe and supported in this community. And that, and me, that means investments in housing and education, in supporting our small businesses, creating jobs, jobs that lead to a more sustainable future. So, you know, we have, in the past, had so many personality conflicts, political maneuvers. All of those things have to end right now. We have to be concerned about the unity, the safety of the city of Minneapolis. This is our moment, this is our time. So in the words of my coffee mug, let's make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Mr. Clerk, could you give us an update on the list of authors? I see some notes in the chat, but just want to make sure for the public that that is noted.
Madam President, according to my count, and if I'm wrong, please correct me, I have all 12 members of the city council standing as co-authors and supporters of the resolution at this point that stands before the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Next is Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, President Bender. And I guess there's four points that I wanted to make. And the first was that I certainly want to be an author of this, and I really appreciate that all the authors who are leading the effort took the comments and considerations that were coming from my office into account as we moved it forward. Second, I also just want to express my deep appreciation for my colleagues here for, for joining this effort. I think it's really critically important that we, as the elected officials, are united. And I think this gives us something to unite behind and unite with and move forward on. And it's really significant that it will be unanimous. And I think it's going to be even more significant when we're standing with the mayor, all united behind this. And I expect that he will join us in this effort and in the pathway that's laid out in this document. Then I also want to reach out a little bit to the community. I think that it's been clear that the community is divided about many of these issues. There's many different perspectives out there. I know for a fact that many of you out there have issues and concerns and things that you're disappointed with about me and about every single council member and about the mayor. We don't always get things right, and we're certainly great targets. But now more than ever, we need everybody out there to try to look at what pulls us together, what pulls us together as elected officials, but also what pulls us together as a community. We need to start getting ourselves moving in the right direction. And I know there are things that we have, that we can criticize about one another in our communities too. And I'm sure that we're going to hear solutions that rub us the wrong way. But I think what we really need to do now is look at what the goals are and look at what the opportunity we have here is and take advantage of that. I guess the last thing I just want to recognize is that this is a big moment. This is a significant opportunity. I've been on the council a long time, and I've been interested in making changes along these lines. And I never would have imagined that we'd be where we are right now, united behind this effort. I know that it was tragedy, and tragedy after tragedy that kind of got us here. But I appreciate we're here and it is a big moment. But as we kind of stand on this big moment, I'm full apprehension, fear, worry, concern, what does it mean, where are we actually going? I'm going to take a moment to celebrate this, and I wish we could high-five, not virtually, but in person, with each and every one of you who are out there. This is cause for celebration. But I think we have to be honest about the apprehensions and the concerns too. And it's going to take us being so focused, so determined, so open, so accepting, so validating of one another, and so loving for us to get there. And that's going to include not just the community and not just the council, but that's going to include our workforce too, a workforce that's been amazing through this all. And we're going to need the best of everybody here in the city if we're going to make the most of this amazing opportunity.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, Council President. And thank you to all of my colleagues who have really come together to really do what the city is asking us to do, which is to lead in this moment, to craft a framework and a plan for moving the city forward. And I am proud of the way that we have pushed each other, the way we have challenged each other, that we have debated this, that we have worked together to, to come to this resolution. We made, some of us made an unorthodox announcement in the park last weekend. And I think it was important for us to do that because of the urgency of the times that we are in. I think we're in a moment when many, many in our community were voicing a level of anguish and pain and a sense of feeling unheard that had accumulated over many, many, many years, and were risking their health to be in the streets demonstrating. And the declaration that we made gave many in our community a sense of being heard, not of being satisfied, not of having achieved their goals, but a sense of being heard enough that they could pause and care for themselves and move on to the next phase of activism and advocacy and co-governing that we're going to need to move into. And it was important for us, when we identified that there was alignment, when we identified that we were ready to declare our intentions to transform our city's approach to public safety, it was important that we do that. At the same time that it gave many people comfort, it also gave many people anxiety because it was unorthodox, because it did not come with the plan and the framework and the official structure that this kind of a process would need. And so I'm so grateful to the city staff who took time to respond to drafts of this, to tell us if we were asking for the right things on the right timelines, to create this framework so that we can move together as an enterprise and do the thing that we're being called to do, which is to lead, which is to lead a process that reaches out to everybody, the people who currently are feeling heard and the people who are currently not feeling heard. And we need to make sure that by the end of this process, everybody understands how their input can be received, how their input can be meaningfully included, and how we're going to center the voices of the people most impacted in this discussion. I want to especially thank Council Vice President Jenkins and Councilmember Palmasano, who invited me into a conversation about ways we could improve this document yesterday and put a lot of work and time into really interrogating the content and making sure that this was something that really achieved that intention. And I think it is a remarkable document. I am proud to have my name on it, along with all of my colleagues, and deeply appreciative of the opportunity to vote for this resolution in this moment.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next, we have Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Did we want to vote on this first? Because I don't want to suppose how it's going to go, although I guess I will, and I'll just speak now because there's 12 authors on it. You know, it was really important to me, and I am so grateful for Council Vice President Jenkins and Councilmember Fletcher and hours of work yesterday, that we were able to work together on this. We really needed to find a way to do this together. And I believe that this document shows the city leadership. This resolution is an act of council, and leadership and unity in this moment is something that the public deserves and is something that I think is healing in, in many ways. I did want to mention that something that had sparked a huge amount of conversation yesterday was about how to include community voices in the challenge of that, particularly in this COVID environment. I see that as a challenge, that is something we are all going to work, need to work to overcome. This document also, I think, appreciates the voice of our police chief, Maderia Aradondo, who I've had a chance to speak with about this document. You know, his concern is not compounding trauma in this moment, and he knows that words matter. And I think that this document helps to move us in the right direction. So I really appreciate Councilmember Kano's additions of the need to have healing in this document. I think that's a really important component of it. Every successful, every successful endeavor of our city requires cooperation and coordination. I know that this is complex because we have the Department of Human Rights, we have the mayor's office and their community engagement processes. We, in this document, are talking about some of our own engagement processes, but I think that you'll see that we will all be working on this together. I think you can expect the mayor's office to be really engaged around changes to police in this moment. And I think you will see our city council doing community engagement around alternatives and alternative responses, the civilian oversight that we manage the ordinances for, you know, and other kinds of changes or incentives in public safety and in public health of our city. So thank you so much for everybody's help on this.
Thank you. Are there any other council members who would like to comment on the resolution? I don't see any. I'll just close by, again, thanking all 11 of you, now all 12 council members, for supporting this resolution and this incredible show of unity as we move forward with both incremental short-term changes, like the temporary restraining order that we adopted last Friday, or other action steps that we will take through our budgets or upcoming decisions, all of which have, in community engagement, built into that process that the city council hosts through hearings and other mechanisms. But also to embark on a much deeper conversation, which requires much broader and deep community conversations, to really transform how we are approaching public safety in our city. So I want to make sure folks know to expect the council to continue to act on change, hopefully in partnership with many other leaders of the city, certainly in full cooperation with the state civil rights investigation and other potential investigations that will But really create space in really supporting our city staff and other partners to lead these conversations. So I also wanted to just really thank the staff as well, who helped us pretty quickly come up with next steps that will embed these commitments that all 12 of us have made in one way or another to transformational change in public safety into the city's process, so that the really brilliant staff who've been laying the groundwork for change for many years can help inform community engagement with many relationships in the community. We can engage institutions like our PCOC and our Civil Rights Department, our Office of Violence Prevention, and the Health Department, our Neighborhood and Community Relations Department, and so many others who will help us engage with the community, research ideas, uplift the work that our community in Minneapolis has already done, and help bring forward some very clear next steps, some of which may come more quickly and some which may take a lot more time. So I'll just note that, you know, the people in Minneapolis are tired of hearing commitments for change, and people in Minneapolis are tired of protesting in the streets every time police kill someone in our community and then seeing it happen again. And that is what has led to massive protests, not just here in Minneapolis, but in cities across the country and cities across the world. George Floyd's death has already inspired city councils in other U.S. cities to make change. We saw here, we very quickly adopted the changes in the temporary restraining order as a very first step. So I think the shared commitment, not just here in Minneapolis, but to policy leaders around the country, our colleagues in cities across the United States, along with communities across the United States, have so much that we can learn from and draw from. But here, really in Minneapolis, the expertise lies in our community. And I appreciate so much the emphasis that Council Vice President Jenkins made on really centering Black voices front and center, and centering communities of color, and centering folks who have experienced violence, and hearing the stories of interactions with our police department, and understanding the way that we can build up those new systems that truly keep every single member of our community safe. That is our goal here, is to make sure every single person in Minneapolis has what they need to feel safe and to be safe in our community. So thank you again to all the council members for your unity, for your collaboration, for your debate, which is an important part of any public process, and for your commitment to work together to respond to our community's demands for change. Is there any further discussion? I will move this item. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and that resolution is adopted. The final two items under New Business are referred from the Charter Commission, and they pertain to potential amendments to the city charter by way of ballot questions to be submitted to the voters in November. I'll ask the clerk to speak to these items.
Madam President, before I do that, there was another resolution that was added to the agenda. I believe I may have missed it, and if I have someone tell me that, this is the resolution that terminates the state of emergency that had been declared. Councilmember Palmasano had a resolution that we added to the agenda before we picked up on the two charter amendments. My apologies if I've missed that.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And just to clarify, that's separate from the action we took ratifying the existing public health emergency?
Correct. These are related to two different states of emergency. Ratifying was related to the emergency for COVID. This was in the aftermath of the death of Mr. Floyd.
Thank you. Just want to make sure that clarification was noted. So this is the resolution from Councilmember Palmasano, the New Business item number four that we added as we amended the agenda. Are there any questions from council members on this item? I don't see any. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution? Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Somo.
Second.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. These questions were posed to me and I just wanted to make sure my colleagues knew, I should turn my camera on. I wanted to make sure that my colleagues knew that I was assured there's no negative consequences anticipated by ending this emergency today, that we checked with FEMA, we checked with the state. There are no negative impacts or consequences anticipated by going ahead and removing the mayor's authorities under this emergency number two. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries and that is adopted. Now that brings us to the last two items, which are the charter amendment changes. And I'll ask the clerk to speak to these items.
Thank you. Madam President, there are two items that are being referred back to the city council. These both deal with election and redistricting matters that are currently codified within the city's charter, as has been discussed numerous previous meetings. There are conflicts between the existing provisions of state law and the city charter. The proposal is to submit these questions as ballot questions to the voters in November in order to clarify those conflicts and bring alignment between existing state law, which has to do with the conduct of special municipal elections and also the timing of redistricting. So those have been discussed on previous occasions with the Policy and Government Oversight Committee. These matters are referred back to council. The requested action is to refer these items back to the POGO Committee so that it can work out the ballot language to be submitted to voters this November.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Are there any questions from councilmembers? I don't see any. Is there, so the recommended action is to receive these letters and refer the ballot questions to the next Policy and Government Oversight Committee. That would be June 18th. May I have that motion?
Somo.
Second.
Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries and both questions will be referred to the next meeting in the Policy and Government Oversight Committee, which is set for Thursday, June 18th. That completes our New Business for today. So next is the reports from our standing committees. First, we have the report from the Business Inspections and Zoning Committee given by the committee chair, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm trying to get my computer going. The Biz Committee, Business Inspections and Zoning, is bringing forward five items for approval this morning. Item number one is a distilled liquor license for Stillheart. Item two is an on-sale liquor license for Misfit Coffee. Item three is a license for the High Watha Golf Course. This is for food and beverage. Item number four is the tenant, are some changes to our tenant relocation assistance ordinance. And I'll note staff is asking the council's help to get the information out to various communities with regard to tenant relocation assistance. And item number five is the gambling license renewals for June 2nd. With that, I'm going to move items one through five for approval this morning.
Councilmember Goodman has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to speak to the tenant relocation ordinance. What I think is just really important is that this is an example of writing new legislation and then learning as it's being implemented and coming back and amending it to really show that the policymaking process is an iterative process. As we rolled it out, as the author for this, as we rolled it out, we realized, oh, these are how some folks are slipping through the cracks and not being held accountable for what the intended purpose of this ordinance is. So we've expanded it, we've learned lessons, and we have, and we are now bringing it forward. A lot of times, folks, when it comes to policymaking and legislating, they will, like, they think that it's all one and done. We passed the legislation and now we're done. And it has to be perfect or else, you know, it's no good. It's, this is an example of learning and watching the implementation, finding the gaps, updating, and constantly improving the process as we move forward. So I asked for my colleague's support for these amendments and, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon. Councilmember Gordon. Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Council Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries and that report is adopted. Next is the report from the Policy and Government Oversight Committee given by Vice President Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee brings forward 18 items today. Item number one approves a legal settlement for workers' compensation claims of Sean Clankey. Item number two authorizes the contract amendment with Metro Legal Services for a total revised amount not to exceed $175,000 for legal process services. Item number three is a resolution which designates polling places to be used for both elections to support in-person voting on election days. I will note for my colleagues that since our meeting last week, this resolution has been corrected as the name of a polling place had been listed incorrectly. Item number four is approval of the local board's 2020 report and associated staff direction. Item number five accepts funding to support the 2020 Urban Scholars Program and authorizes contracts with partner agencies for this year's program. Items number six, seven, and eight all pertain to contracts for work in conjunction with the city's new public service building. Item number nine authorizes a contract amendment with Ebert Incorporated for the Fire Station Number Four Miscellaneous Improvements Project. Item number 10 authorizes a grant application to be submitted to the U.S. Department of Justice to develop, implement, and expand programs that respond to illicit opioids, stimulants, and other substances of abuse. Item number 11 authorizes the acquisition of permanent right-of-way and construction easements for the Hennepin Avenue Reconstruction Project. Item number 12 authorizes a subordinate funding agreement for the Southwest Light Rail Project in connection with the Metro Green Line Extension. Item number 13 authorizes a contract amendment for a new substation located at the city's Fridley Water Treatment Campus. Items number 14 and 15 pertain to agreements related to the 10th Avenue Water Main River Crossing Project. Item number 16 accepts the sole bid of Werner Electric Ventures to furnish and deliver the pump station number five electrical modifications for medium voltage equipment at the Fridley Water Treatment Campus. Item number 17 is a series of actions related to the 2020 Consolidated Plan, Action Plan for COVID-19 Community Development Block Grant and Emergency Solutions Grant supplemental funding. Item number 18 is two staff directions regarding event requirements related to off-duty police officers. Madam President, I move approval of all items.
Thank you. Council Vice President Jenkins has moved the Policy and Government Oversight Committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries and that report is adopted. There we go, just switching between screens. That completes the business from our standing committees. The next order of business is the Notice of Ordinance Introductions. So I believe, Mr. Clerk, we have three now listed on the agenda, but I was just pulling up the agenda to confirm.
Madam President, you're correct. There should be two shown on the agenda and the third is under that heading called Addendum because it was posted after the agenda was first published.
Thank you. So first, Councilmember Ellison gives notice of, sorry, pardon me. First, Councilmember Gordon gives notice of his intent to introduce at the next regular meeting of the council the subject matter of an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances to amend, alter, and add provisions related to the police department and its duty to structure and oversight. Is there any discussion on that notice? Second, Councilmember Kano gives notice of her intent to introduce at the next regular meeting of the council the subject matter of an ordinance amending the Licenses and Business Regulations Code to add a new chapter, 353, entitled Community Property Sale to require the advance notice of sale of commercial property. Any discussion on that notice? Finally, we have the notice that was added to the agenda this morning. This is a notice brought forward by Councilmembers Ellison, Kano, Gordon, Fletcher, and myself that would refer to the voters a question about amending the city charter to create a new charter department to provide community safety. Is there any discussion on that notice?
Madam, Madam President, I'm sorry. I had been asked about timelines and process of the charter amendment and a ballot question. Would you like me to address that now?
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I'll see if any of my colleagues have questions. I know we've had a long meeting and that these are notices that will be given for discussion at future meetings.
Correct.
So Councilmember Gordon.
I think we would greatly appreciate it if that information were provided in writing and we'll certainly have an opportunity to discuss it further and it probably needs to be posted on the website.
Thank you, Councilmember Gordon. And I know there is quite a lot of detail on the website about the various charter amendment processes publicly available. So I'll just pause again and see if there's any discussion from councilmembers on the notice, the three notices. Seeing none, notices given on each of those items, the first by Councilmember Gordon, the second by Councilmember Kano, and the third by Ellison, Kano, Gordon, Fletcher, and Bender. So those notices are given and no further action is required today. Those will come back to future meetings. Finally, we have the order of announcements. Are there any announcements from councilmembers this morning?